It's nice to be able to do this forum today. The forum is sponsored by the Faculty Association. I have the honor of being the president of that group. My name is Fred Van Hartsfall. We have an emcee and moderator today, Dennis Sutton, to my left, who will introduce you to the candidates in a few moments. I'd like to mention that to start, if you need a parking pass, we have parking passes today, these little pink passes that I can give you or Nikki Alexander, our vice president. I'd like to thank all of you who have appeared today, who have come, that you're here. I can acknowledge a lot of our trustees are here today, it looks like most of them. Gary Shank, they're sitting to most of your right, Ellen James, Rick Verberg, and Jan Magini. That's terrible. I've worked with Jan, but I just had a little brain meltdown from starting up, so.
[laughing]
Yeah, that's true. So I want to acknowledge all of our trustees, and they're tremendously dedicated to this institution, and they give us a lot of guidance on a policy level that we wouldn't have without them, so thank you for your attendance here. With that, I want to mention one other thing, that election that we have is less than three weeks away now, on May 8th, and that election is two significant events, I guess I'll call them, two significant items on the ballot that will affect us not only in the short term, but in the long term. One, of course, is the candidate election, for which we're here today, but another is the millage. I can't underscore the importance of the millage to this community, not just the immediate community of Community College, but also to the community at large. Candidates are running for six-year terms, and would certainly affect the direction of the college for the next several years, but the vote on the millage is probably going to affect us for a lot longer than that, whether it passes or fails. So I encourage everyone to vote their conscience. I think every vote counts. It's not an election that has to be won or lost by 60-40 percent. It only takes a vote, a single vote, to win an election. People don't need to participate in telephone banks to have an influence on that election. Even if people can't participate in a pro-vote or a nay-vote for that election, every one of us can participate by simply calling their 10 closest friends and relatives and urging them to vote however they would like to urge them to vote. So I encourage your participation in the election. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dennis Sutton, former radio personality and current GRCC language and thought faculty member. Dennis?
I'm going to make sure, it's more important for you to hear them than to hear me, so I know you can hear me, but I just want to make sure all the microphones are set, and you have some sense of how close you need to get to the microphone. So I'm going to introduce you, and why don't you just give us a hi, and we'll see how the microphones are working, okay? So we'll start with Carol Lepucki, first on my right.
Hello, Dennis Sutton.
How was that for you? Okay. You're probably going to have to work fairly close to the microphones with this bigger room, okay? Second is Terri Hanlon.
Hi, I'm Terri Hanlon.
Thank you. And next is Margot Anderson.
Hi, I'm Margot.
All right, and last is Fran Pepper.
Hi, I'm Fran Pepper.
Very good. So if all you needed to do was hear the sound of their voice to determine who you were voting for, then you can leave now. But for those of you who would like more information, we'll continue on. Here's the ground rules. We're going to have up to three-minute opening statements by each candidate, and then we'll start a rotating system of questions, and each candidate has up to two minutes to answer each of the questions, and at the end, we'll have a two-minute closing statement. So we drew numbers, so we'd be completely fair, and by the way, some of the candidates, when they heard how meticulously we had set this up, thought somebody in the engineering department had set this up. No, it was actually we in the language and thought department. We're very capable of being anal also. Thank you. So let's, for the first opening statement and introduction, here's Carol Lepucki.
Good afternoon to you. I'm glad you're here on this great sunny day. Three minutes to share your life. I have a background in public education. I have been a public education instructor, K-12, in special education for five years. I've had opportunity to be an adjunct faculty at Central Michigan University. I have been in the nonprofit arena. Many of you in the room that have worked with me within the disability area know that I managed Indian Trails Camp for physically disabled children and adults for a number of years, and most recently, in my current 15-year career, I'm in a combination of government, economic development, and education. I work for the U.S. Small Business Administration, and I play a key role across Michigan as the state director. Federal funds come to Grand Valley, and I manage small business centers across Michigan. So I have tremendous partnerships with the community colleges across Michigan, because you are, as a community college, key in workforce development for Michigan right now of all times. I have a 10-year leadership role from Northview Public Schools, which I am very, very proud of. I served half the time of that 10 years as board president, and I operated under a policy governance model that I think is in wonderful sync with how the community college operates. I'm rooted in West Michigan. I have had all my adult years here, grew up in southeast Michigan, but don't hold that against me. I come from a family of public service. My husband has worked for years as special education director in Muskegon, working Head Start Program, and early on, I have two daughters, and not falling far from the tree. The first is a special education teacher, who is in St. Louis, Michigan, and the other is a daughter in medical technology, just finishing up at MSU. So I understand, like many of you in the room who have young people in your life, the other side of that, growing up and going through the educational process, and most recently. I believe in Grand Rapids Community College. I believe in the philosophy of the affordable higher education that we provide here. I promote it deeply. I believe strongly in the open-door policy. I believe in the help that students get who are in need and may not have had an opportunity. I also understand very well that many of the K-12 programs across our county and outside select community colleges, their first choice, I know that from Northview. I believe in the regional centers, the learning centers, the MTEx, and I believe that a trustee like myself should have experience in policy work, fund development, people, management, communication, and the community, and I believe I'm your candidate. Thank you for having me here.
You managed to avoid, hold on a second, you managed to avoid, there is, by the way, a very annoying sound that will happen at the end of the three minutes, so you saw it coming, didn't you?
I did.
Okay. I want one of those for my classroom. [laughing] All right. Up second is Terri Hanlon.
Hi. Who am I? It was a taxing question when you have to introduce yourself publicly. First thing I thought of is, who am I? I'm a graduate of Grand Rapids Junior College. I was a very non-traditional student, returning at the age of 27. I had already graduated from a two-year technical course at Ferris State University, and I would like to open to say, without Grand Rapids Junior College, I would not have been able to achieve my personal goals like I have. I had 30 years of education experience. I spent them mainly in the Forest Hills Public School District. Before that, I had 11 years in business and industry. So after I returned and got an associate's, I went on to a bachelor's degree at Western, a master's degree in education at University of Michigan, and a master's degree in administration from Michigan State. So I feel all my college bases recovered there. But it gives me an understanding of the liberal arts side of our world, as well as workforce development. You may or may not know, in 1991, I was elected as the founding board. My commitment to this college is who I am. Many of you have experienced firsthand my dedication, my leadership, and my participation in this college. My presence on this board since 1991 has influenced the college, whether it be in growth, staff negotiations, hiring practices, new programs, or workforce development. Students know who I am. Students know that I care through my presence at activities on campus. I support fair representation of all student groups. I support keeping an eye on curriculum and transfer, because it's an important part of a two-year college. And being part of the older learner returning to school, I have a passion around the older learner center and the goals for lifelong learning. Many of you know about the mission of Grand Rapids Community College. We have a mission, vision, values, and end statement. You will see my influence throughout that. The decisions we will be faced with in the next few years need an experienced voice. I encourage you to support me, to continue with that experience, and to continue the work around what we've begun here at Grand Rapids Community College. This really is no time to change board positions, and I'm really glad that tonight I have an opportunity to present to you my thoughts, issues, and views on the eight questions that you've presented before us.
Okay, thanks, Terri. Well, that wasn't so bad. Up next is Margot Anderson.
Good afternoon, and it's nice to be here, and I'm glad you took the time out to come, that it was important enough for you to come and hear all of us. A little about my background. I'm a native of Grand Rapids. I attended the Old South High School. I attended Grand Rapids Junior College, and I matriculated to Western Michigan University. I hold a bachelor's from Western, and three master's degrees, one in elementary education, one in counseling and personnel, and one in leadership. My three areas in my work have been as an elementary classroom teacher, as a high school guidance counselor, and then my last years with Grand Rapids Public Schools were as an elementary principal. I've served on other boards, and I think my board experience before I came to Grand Rapids Community College is invaluable. YWCA Board, and also the Women's History Council Board. In thinking about my past six years, I've appreciated the collegiality with my other six board members. I feel that my background is quite an asset for me to come and sit at the board. I would like to continue my tenure. I have just completed my first year as a trustee, and would like to continue my service. I feel it's important that you give back to the community, and in my six years, I have had great experiences as being the liaison to the Diversity Center, the Woodrick Diversity Center, and also a liaison to the Quality Team, which sets the standard for performance, which we have just been awarded a Quality Award, and also as treasurer to the Foundation Board, which is important for us to have raised the money we did in the Open Door Campaign for scholarships. And my motto is, "Experience counts."
Thanks, Margot. And finally, Fran Pepper.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here today and for listening. My vision for Grand Rapids Community College is to maintain and improve the college's vitality in the downtown community while continuing to serve the outlying districts, especially now that the college faces serious economic challenges because of dwindling resources and increasing enrollment. I will continue to support the college's commitment to diversity by providing educational programs that encourage people to achieve their goals. And I want to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a lifelong learner. I've been a resident of Grand Rapids most of my life. I began my work at GRCC in 1979 in the occupational training program, and later worked in various administrative capacities. I worked at the college for 26 years because I truly love it here, and I've really missed it a lot since I've been gone, but I've stayed connected. I stayed connected by volunteering to raise money for scholarships, and I even did a short stint in the bookstore, which was really a great experience in lots of ways. Interacting with students was, excuse me, was really a wonderful opportunity for me. And one of the things that I noticed is, they'd come in, and especially the last week before school, and they'd go into shock over how much books cost. $150 for one book, and they thought $150 would cover the whole cost, and it was really gratifying for me because I was able to help them to find ways, to find funding, to be able to pay for those books. So it was really nice to have that kind of a, you know, an attachment, I guess. A little bit more about myself is that I'm a critical thinker. I've had the privilege of open and honest relationships with the president, the faculty, the staff, and the board. I'm competent and confident and stand up for what I believe is right. Some of my experiences are that I'm knowledgeable of college operations as a student, alumna, citizen, and retiree. I had 16 years as liaison to the president and the board of trustees. I led students on service-learning trips to disaster areas. I co-chaired the presidential inauguration team. I've been a member of the Council for Minority Concerns, which is no longer in existence because we were able to take that council in the early days and move it into what's now the Bob and Alicia Woodrick Diversity Learning Center. I've planned and hosted and presented at state and national trustee conferences, including presentations on policy governance. Thank you very much.
I've got to get me one of those. Thank you. We'll keep the same order for the first question, and then we'll start a rotating system, so we give everybody a chance to go first and last. So the first question is this. What are the three most important issues facing the college, and what would you do to address them? And up first is Carol Lepucki.
Thank you. To me, there are three major elements that address the critical issues of the college, and that would be, none surprise, the financial stability. The stability of funding related to the three-part pieces of that puzzle. The state funding, which is something that, as we all know, has been on a decline. The tuition, and how we stay with our mission of being able to serve all and still deal with the challenge of tuition issues. And then the millage, which it's been very fun to be out on the campaign trail, whether I win or don't win, I've had an opportunity, I think, to have great conversations about the millage, and in doing so, I certainly feel that the community is understanding that Grand Rapids Community College has been good stewards of money for a number of years, and at a time at which our buildings are very much being stretched, our faculty are being stretched, that the millage is very important right now. So the financial stability is number one. Number two would be the student and community service, and as was discussed, there's a lot of great programming that continually needs to be evaluated and determined how it can be strengthened, whether, again, it's the programs related to fueling young people from the high schools into the system and getting readiness pieces in place, or whether it's assisting students who are onsite, whether it's the come-back-to-school for retraining for job force. So how we deal with the student body is our second biggest. And the third is our very important third part of that puzzle, the human capital that drives this learning process, the instructors, staff, the administration, the personnel, and that means the quality work environment and the funding sources to negotiate good contracts with our employees. Thank you.
Three most important issues facing this college. Number one is to continue to meet the needs of our students. A college is about our students. They are facing a much different future. We need to be part of that future plan, that readiness plan. As the economy changes, GRCC needs to be part of what it takes to keep education our focus, education again for the students and for the future. Number two, keeping the lines of communication open with all groups on campus. GRCC's reputation is built on people. We have all shared in the design of this college. I want to make sure all employees are part of the ownership of the college and our mission and vision. Three, finances, fiscal responsibility. Again, we all play a role in this because it affects our ends. When money is cut by the state of Michigan, we have to make the adjustments. The skill is to keep the quality. It is imperative that we work with our legislatures. We need to work towards solutions. We can't feel like victims. We need to continue to find ways to look at finances differently. We have to support our ideas that we come up with. We have to be creative with economic solutions. There are new solutions on the horizon. There just has to be. We need to highlight what we do to and for this community beyond dollars and cents. We need to highlight valued added education. I am feeling confident that this community will recognize our value and support us on May 8th.
The three most important issues I feel that are facing us at this particular time is, number one, the budget. And we are all aware of the state cuts, and the creativity and the outstanding job that our CFO has done here at the college has helped us to get to this point. However, we do know that for excellence in our programs, for quality of programs, we do need money, and that ties into, to remain fiscally sound, we need to pass our millage, because we all know that it's been 16 years since we have come out for any money, since we separated from Grand Rapids Public Schools, and so the budget is one of the most important issues. The second issue is policy governance, which we, under policy governance, which we are governed by, which we as board members set the policy for the college. It's very important to keep it current and relevant, so that our end policies are achieved, and that is really what drives us as trustees. The third is maintaining a collaboration with, as we said, legislators, and also knowing that we are the community's college. We need to be that vital link that links us to the college.
Thank you. The three most important issues facing the Grand Rapids Community College today, number one is diminishing state resources. I think we need to look at the elephant that is in the middle of the room, and that's that Michigan is not going to be coming back real soon. Hopefully, they will, but I think we need to all work together to improve Michigan and improve our local economy and improve the funding for Grand Rapids Community College, which does include a millage vote. I am in support of that. Right now, state funding is 21 percent, property tax is 35, tuition is 41 percent of the budget, with 3 percent being to other. That's really lopsided, and hopefully, we can improve Michigan and improve our funding through state funding. And the way to do that is to listen, listen, listen. Listen to the community, listen to legislators, the leaders in our community, faculty, staff, workers, job seekers, students, and others. We have to listen. I think a leader listens to the community. They take what they hear, they put it all together, and come up with a plan. The second thing that I think faces the college today is under-prepared students. They seem to be mentally and physically tired, perhaps because of poor nutritional health or from trying to balance work, family, and learning. We need to deliberately monitor prerequisites, so students don't get into classes they can't succeed in. We need to assess students' ability to achieve success before failures and dropouts occur, and we need, I think we need more learning corners. I think the learning corner is absolutely wonderful for people who are not ready for college but want to go. The third thing I think is a top issue is greater academic rigor. I think we need to continue to attract those excellent students. We know they're here. Thank you.
We'll continue with the two minutes per response for the second round. Question is, what do you think about the trend of increasing numbers of adjunct faculty, and what would you do, if anything, about that trend? And we'll start this round with Terri.
The strength and success of Grand Rapids Community College is in its full-time faculty. This full-time quality is stronger than ever. Many of you know that we recently went to professorships as a title. Many of you have your PhDs, and all of you have master's degrees. It is no accident, too, that many of our students return in the summertime from other universities to take their core classes because of the reputation of full-time faculty. Students know about the quality of our staff and want to experience that. I also feel very strongly that we need the field experience and quality of adjunct staff, those who bring different perspectives to the departments and to the individuals, connecting and sharing with full-time professors. Variety gives us quality. To the issue of increasing number of adjunct, I support a higher balance of full-time faculty. We all know that there are economic issues, and it is a conversation that everyone needs to understand, and everyone needs to be part of it. As a current board member, I want the conversation about this issue to be open and reasonable. What is the best possible blend for our college? I am confident there is a solution, but remember, I support a higher balance of full-time faculty. I will do my best to listen, to ask the serious questions, and make sure that the full-time versus adjunct issue is given the attention it deserves.
I am well aware of all of the concerns and issues that have surfaced around adjunct faculty. However, as Terri said, we do need a balance of full-time faculty and adjunct faculty. We do need more full-time faculty, period. Hopefully, when we pass this millage, we will have monies that will help us to secure more full-time faculty. Looking at what adjunct bring to the table is, when we look at the programs here at the college, we look at the hours of the day, we look at the weekends, we look at nights, and we look at the flexibility in people's schedules. And so there's a need for adjunct, and there's a need for full-time faculty. The multiplicity of the experiences that different people bring from different disciplines do help us here at the college also. But I believe that our first concern is for our students and our quality of programs. So I believe that whatever faculty, whether it's full-time and/or adjunct, that they are quality and that they are well-versed in their area of their discipline. It's important to have faculty that are confident in their area of study.
Well, it's a financial decision that the college has made and the board has made regarding adjunct faculty and hiring more of them. I don't like it, but I understand why it happens, because of the finances. I don't like increasing the number of adjunct faculty, because I don't see great advantage for students. Just because adjunct faculty are experts in their field doesn't make them a good teacher. So, and they're generally not as involved as our full-time faculty are. As part of their day, our full-time faculty serve on committees, search teams, quality teams, and other activities that are involving decision-making at the institutional level. They add quality to the institution, and I just want to recognize and appreciate our full-time faculty for their commitment to the college's future, their outreach activities outside the classroom, and the other work that they do that makes this a good place to be.
Full-time faculty breathe the oxygen of an organization, and they wave the banner of the Raiders. They belong in terms of strategy, they are integrated in the day-by-days, and they're there for the long run. They see the pieces to the whole. They are the core and the rock bed of an organization.
They are the core and the rock bed of an organization. I would parallel this to my own organization where I breathe by full-time business consultants across Michigan who help people start their small company. And yet, I also have niches that are important where I hire contractual folks, or in the academic setting, we would say, the adjuncts. And those tend to be specialists, people who bring an expertise area in, can complement, can become part of the picture, are an important part of the picture but aren't the picture. So, it's that balance. And where I elected to your board, I would work strategically to figure out what that best chemistry is. If I look at my own organization, I certainly am very aware that, as my partners here have said, that it's a financial issue as well, that the unknowns of, the uncertainties of the flow of clientele to come in can oftentimes be met with that adjunct piece, too. So, the flexibility, the financial, there are some pluses. There are some wonderful experts out there in the field that can complement the core of the basic organization. I feel strongly in full-time personnel. As I say, they're the rock bed of an organization, and I've observed that here very much. Thank you.
Margot Anderson will have the first response to the third question, which is this. How can you use your resources throughout West Michigan to facilitate partnerships between others and GRCC?
Well, there's a variety of ways that we use our connections, well-connected to the community. Not only with all of the community colleges that are in Michigan, and that's 29 community colleges, our activities as board members, as trustees, with the MCCA, which is the Michigan Community College Association, which is a collaborative effort, also with the ACCT, which is the Association of Community College Trustees nationally and locally here in the Ken Intermediate School District, the KISAB. Also, we have a strong connection with our legislators and our senators. And this coming Monday, we will be hosting a legislative breakfast where we collaborate and we find out the latest information regarding monies and things that will affect Grand Rapids Community College. I feel another area is with our president, because he serves on a national committee, which is for literacy with President Bush, and all of his connection on boards give us another partnership and liaison. Also, we just recently received the Quality Award, which means we did a lot of collaborative things in order to have the high performance that we needed in order to receive that award. Also, our board liaison that has to do with workforce development certainly is something that across the state helps us. And also personally, my ongoing work with Grand Rapids Public Schools and as a consultant for Ken Intermediate School District, all of these collaborative efforts help in our partnerships and enhance Grand Rapids Community College.
I know who to go to, who gives to the college, who is generous in supporting us, and I have access to community people who are involved with GRCC. I'm a collaborator. If you take a look at my list of endorsements, they're pretty much evenly divided between conservative and liberal people. But we're all together, working together, community leaders and regular folks that are interested in what's going on at Grand Rapids Community College and how we can create new partnerships in new ways that maybe we've never thought about before. The way to do this, too, is to listen, as I've said before. Listen, listen, listen. Listen to the community, listen to legislators, leaders, faculty and staff, workers, and others. That's how we find out what's really needed in our community, and that's where we find the answers, is when we can put it all together and then create solutions to solve problems. Trustees are the voice of the community they serve. If we're out there listening, we can implement what's best for the community. And I just want to say that creative leaders don't necessarily have the answers. They look for and listen for answers and then take the action to implement the solutions.
Thank you. My organization is a partnership organization at the federal, state, and local level. So, I am savvy in terms of opportunities to be on Capitol Hill and communicate with legislators about the mission of an organization and what its needs are. I have relationships at the state level in terms of our legislators. And again, at the state level, have opportunity to stay on that pathway of communicating. At the local level, I'm very engaged with a multiple arena of partners. Education institutions, two-year and four-year institutions across Michigan are a major part of my life, helping, it takes a village to raise an entrepreneur and, as it does, a student within a community. And so, this isn't about any of us running solo. And I actually, while the times are tough right now, sometimes the times make us rely on each other more and not duplicate services. So partnering is the way of our world. The economic development organizations, be they in West Michigan with my offices here or across Michigan, play a major role in building an entrepreneur and in building the workforce development team that you are creating. The Michigan First Offices, I am deeply embedded with Michigan First Offices. The nonprofit organizations who play a role in our economy. I am deeply engaged with associations, trade associations, chambers. And so, I understand, I think, the web that it takes to get from here to here with an organization. In looking at the website here at Community College, I see that there are liaisons within the trustees to organizations and entities, and I would feel most comfortable with any of these that I've discussed. MTEx would be a perfect example. Thank you.
Grand Rapids Community College Board of Trustees has a strong presence throughout West Michigan. Please feel this compliment. We have an excellent reputation as a college and as a board throughout Michigan, not just Western Michigan. We are well-respected by the Michigan Association of Community Colleges. Our own Jan Magini is the current statewide representative, and she has held an office of chairperson for a year. The board has the respect of our state legislatures, and we meet and communicate with them regularly. To the issue of partnerships, sometimes I feel that I might have been responsible for inventing that word. All through my career, my K-12 career, we worked with partnerships. We connected education and business. My personal resources can be used through my reputation. I've established that reputation with 16 years on this Board of Trustees. People know my influence, and people know that I am there around issues of partnerships. My connections to this community and to the state are my resources to continue that success. I have a strong working relationship with the Chamber of Commerce, Ken Intermediate School District, the legislators, service organizations, and more. And furthermore, this state looks to me and the rest of the board as leaders in curriculum, negotiation, learning corners, lifelong learning, teaching and learning models, and other things surrounding, again, connecting the business in the world of education.
Fran Pepper gets the first response for the next question, which is, how would you deal with the issue of academic freedom, such as controversial student and faculty work, productions on campus, textbooks, and videos?
Thank you. Grand Rapids Community College is a place of learning. Students should be encouraged to explore and question everything. This is a place where critical thinking should be learned and practiced. And I believe there should not be any censorship at all. I believe that Grand Rapids Community College is a place of enlightenment, where there should not, should be a non-religious free flow of ideas, an open exchange, where you can discuss, where you can talk about whatever it is openly and honestly. It should be a safe environment for students to explore those things. I believe that we absolutely cannot inhibit these student rights. And when I'm talking about no censorship and, you know, not having any inhibitions or, you know, restrictions, I'm talking about intellectual exploration. I'm not talking about certain illegal or offensive behaviors that should never be tolerated. I'm talking about open and honest, free, open dialogue among students and with the faculty and with the employees.
Thank you. This is a very fragile one because of, in my opinion, we've become a world laden with technology right now and how we, the power of words and the ease of communication right now can be a wonderful asset to us or can also be a very frightening thing. I say that to say that policy, in terms of setting boundaries for safety and welfare of our staff and the students and our institution are critical. However, we are about freedom of speech. We're grounded in that in America. We should be all about in this institution, making students aware of serious scholarly viewpoints. That's our role. We should be all about stimulating thinking and stimulating learning and coaching students to build opinions and to be able to support them. We should be all about as a faculty, pursuing research and publishing findings. We do have, however, it's interesting that we are here on this juncture of what's happening in Virginia right now, where I think we will have lessons to be learned from, whether it's Don Imus for the last three weeks, or where we are with NBC receiving information and having to make critical decisions about what they're going to do with that information. The power of information, I think, is a very fragile thing right now tied to our technology. And how we use that is going to either help us leap to the next level of our world, or we are going to be at risk. The freedom of speech to be highly valued. Thank you.
Essential to our freedom of speech is academic freedom. I have proven this in the past on issues that have come to the attention of this board and this community college and the greater Grand Rapids community. Institutions of higher education need to have the latitude to challenge the thinker. But the fine line is the respect for the individual whose personal belief system clashes with the professors or the department guidelines. I do support structuring options within your curriculum requirements. I believe this is respecting viewpoints of all students. But please know that I will always support the issue of academic freedom.
Academic controversy is not new to us. But we here at the college have thought of all the areas where things may arise, and that is the reason that we have written policies that cover all of the areas that possibly could arise. With the faculty, their academic freedom, they are aware of the latitude that they have in the areas of their study. Not too long ago, we had a controversial issue, and in that, we had to take a look at our policies. And it made us clarify and look at that policy and make sure that it covered what it needed to cover. We also worked with the president, the board members and the president, to work through this, to have discussions, so that we could meet needs as they arise in this area. The president does communicate with the board, and we do also with him. And more recently, in the last week, we've had a controversy regarding an uncomfortable situation. And things are worked out between students and professors as this incident was worked out. And so, academic freedom is a part of all of us, and we must continue to have it.
Carol will go first with the next question. How will you stay connected to the faculty here at GRCC?
I am very hopeful that through Faculty Council that we'll keep close link. I would expect that as a trustee, I would be engaged in the activities within the community that are appropriate for a trustee to be engaged in, and certainly, the millage would be a perfect example of that. Communication through the administration, communication actively at board meetings, through publications. I do that whether I'm a trustee or non-trustee, I'm a community member. Through assigned liaison responsibilities, again, I see that trustees take an active role with certain committee groups and parts of faculty. And I would close by saying that it's a fine line in terms of engagement and connection to that which oversteps boundaries. We are not watchdogs. We are not micromanagers if we're good trustees. We are policymakers, and we provide, hopefully, an environment in which faculty can excel. Thank you.
I am a very approachable individual, and staying connected to me means showing a sincere interest in what's happening on campus, that's inside and outside of the classroom. I listen. I attend functions, almost to the detriment of not being home many nights in a row. I read the faculty minutes. I keep up with what's going on there. I read GRCC Today. I read GRCC Post-it, just recently, back-and-forth conversations about holiday verbiage. The collegiate keeps me connected. Paying attention to student organizations, what they are doing and who their campus advisors are. I stay connected by asking the hard questions when necessary concerning faculty issues. I'm a voice of inquiry. I pride myself in being extremely visible and an open member to the board and to the Grand Rapids Community College community.
We as board members have many, many ways in which to stay connected to the faculty. And I'm a listening ear to all of those who come to me with concerns or problems. I attend many, many, many functions on campus. I also read the council minutes. I've met with Fred Van Hertesfeldt and had discussion with him. And one of my future goals is to be a guest in some of the classrooms so that I can see firsthand what goes on in classrooms between faculty and students. And as a liaison to the Bob and Alicia Woodward Diversity Center, I stay connected in that I'm in the meetings, when they have meetings, and I attend their functions. And also with the quality team in their meetings and keeping abreast of how we as a college stay our college of excellence. And I would have any kind of communication with, I am free to have any kind of communication with faculty via voicemail, I'm sorry, phone, or email, or letter, or just a conversation, and also interaction with them at our board meetings. So, I really feel that I'm available to hear any concern at any time, and I'm very approachable.
I'm already on campus allowed. I just like to be here and get into the enthusiasm and the spirit and the excitement of this place. So, I walk around a lot, and I'll continue to do that. And, you know, people, faculty will come out of their doors when they see me go by, and they'll step out, and we'll have a little chat for a minute. I want to continue to do that. I want to be a part of the community of Grand Rapids Community College, listening to faculty, listening to staff. I'll be in the cafeteria, sitting with students, talking to them, listening, what are their, you know, what's going on in their lives. I'll be accessible to faculty through email or voicemail or written communication, whatever kind of communication anyone would want to do. I'm also willing to meet with small groups of faculty at any time in order to keep the lines of communication open. Along with that goes some parameters around what would be discussed there. There are some things that are off-limits, and the faculty all knows what that is. There are some things that are off-limits, and the faculty all knows what that is already. So I don’t see that as—that it would ever be a problem at all. I’m a lifelong learner. I plan to continue to take classes here at GRCC. We’ve got some fabulous classes, and I’ve got a whole list of them that I still want to do. So I—
Am I done?
Oh. Trustees are the community’s voice, and GRCC faculty are part of the community, and their voices must be heard as well. I don’t know where we are, but that’s it. Thank you.
Teri gets the first response this round. Question is, what experiences and skills do you bring to GRCC and the Board of Trustees?
Well, I bring 16 years of proven support and dedication as a current board member. This gives me lots of experience, and I’ve really tweaked a whole set of new skills. I have experience in K-12 education, skills in dealing with teachers, parents, administrators, and students. I have experiences on community boards, such as the Girl Scouts and Women’s History Council, so I can bring outside-board experiences. My personal influence, as a member of the Education and Workforce Development Committee of the Chamber of Commerce, gives me experiences of connecting business and education. I have an understanding and a commitment to issues concerning the development of our workforce now and in the future. And by the way, our workforce means a commitment to the liberal arts side of our college as well. I am a certified consultant for education and career development. I have facilitation skills, and they’re evident throughout my experiences, particularly with the Chamber of Commerce as a healing racism facilitator. I have a skill of not being intimidated when it is necessary to ask the tough questions. I have strong leadership experiences, many of them starting when I was the alumni president for Grand Rapids Community College. And I have the skills I obtained while a student at GRJC. Those skills and those experiences do and will stay with me for my entire professional and personal life.
As a retired educator, I feel I have many skills and expertise to continue to serve on the board. I’ve been a classroom teacher, so I do understand the interaction between teachers and students. I’ve been a counselor, and as a counselor at Creston High School, I sent many students here to GRCC. And now, it seems, it has come full circle, and now I’m sitting on the board, so I can see the fruits of my labor and also help students from a different perspective. As an administrator, as an elementary principal, I feel I had interaction and worked with parents, students, and the other employees in a school building. As a board member, I have contributed to many, many, many of the successes that we’ve had in the last six years. Presently, I still continue to work for Grand Rapids Public Schools as an itinerant principal, and also I’m a licensed consultant with Kent Intermediate School District, and I’m doing workshops presently in education and poverty. I’m a good listener, and I’m a learner from students and from employees and from faculty and from the community. I understand the educational process, and it’s invaluable for me to be able to give back to my community.
I have the best working knowledge of how the college operates, inside knowledge as an employer, outside knowledge as a student, former student, and citizen. I’m a good listener. I listen to the issues. I listen to the community. And I’ve been out in the community a lot and heard so many good things about Grand Rapids Community College as I’ve gone from one event to another. I know from both inside and outside perspectives. I’ve researched and prepared all materials for the board and done the final review of those materials, so I’m very aware of what the board operation is all about. I’m a consensus builder. My endorsers are both conservative and liberals, working together, and I think that’s a real plus in experience. I’ve had a lot of experience with the bricks-and-mortar part of Grand Rapids Community College, many, many projects, probably at least 10 building projects. Tassle M Tech and the Holland M Tech were the most recent ones, where I was involved from groundbreaking through the opening. I know the programs. I know how they work. I’m aware of what the healthcare programs are all about, the waiting list, what’s the difference between being ready and waiting. There’s a big difference between those two lists, and most people don’t know that. They just hear five years for nurses. It’s more than that, or it’s less than that, because not all those people on the waiting list are actually ready to go into the program. I know the budget. It’s $83.7 million. I know state aid is, you know, way too low. It’s $1,150 per student for our students right now. I know how the budget is built. I know what goes into it. I manage the budget for the president trustee office, and I’ve been doing this work for most of my life. Thank you.
Experience that I bring to the table, I have 10 years’ experience with board governance, and that’s a very big piece of the work of a trustee, is to understand the policy piece and how it all fits together. I have experience in budgeting as a 10-year board member and as the board president during some very trying times when we began seeing Michigan’s first cuts on state aid. I understand those pieces. The negotiations—I have a deep understanding of negotiations, 10 years of in that position also, being engaged with the solutions to successful contracts for the school system. I have a deep understanding of entrepreneurship. I breathe it, and that’s a very big piece of the work, I think, that I share with the community college, is the reemployment of folks who currently are out of positions because of no choice of their own, people who still want to be entrepreneurs themselves, young people who have a dream of owning their own business. And so I think I have great connectivity with this organization with my work. The education background, the fact that I have K-12 experience, that I have been a classroom teacher at that level, that I have academic experience at the four-year institution level, and that I have been responsible for a school board that was a sizable school district that did some very exciting things in education. I also have strong connectivity to the community, which I’ve just shared with you. But most of all, I think what I bring to the table for you is that I’ve always worked as in leadership in very complex systems, and education is a very complex system with lots of moving parts. I have deep organizational skills. Some of you in the room have seen my list of to-dos. I have great follow-through. I think many of you have observed that. Thank you.
We’ll start the next round with Margot Anderson, and the question is, why are you running for the Board of Trustees, and what, if anything, is your agenda?
Why I’m running? Six years ago, I was approached by a group of friends and asked if I would run for the board. And at that time, I wasn’t as knowledgeable as I am now. I believe that I have done a good job in the last six years, but I know there’s a lot more work that we need to do. I believe I’m a team player, and I work well with the other six board members. I feel we’ve made tremendous strides in the last six years. I think I represent—the—I know I represent the community well that elected me, and I would like to continue to do that. I recognize the needs of the college, and I’m willing to work hard to meet those needs. I’m a good listener. I’m a lifelong learner, and I think I have provided opportunities that have made a difference here at the college. I enjoy my work. It’s important work that we do here. I have a love of education. My background is education, and I believe that it gives me an asset. And it’s just rewarding to be able to give back to the community, since we are the community’s college.
When I left the college at the end of 2004, I stayed connected. I think I already told you, I volunteered to raise money for scholarships. I worked in the bookstore, and I supported the provost search team. And I did this not because I wanted to make the $8 an hour I was paid in the bookstore had nothing to do with money. It had everything to do with connection, in connection with Grand Rapids Community College. I love this place. I love the people who are here. I love the students. I want to stay connected in an even more meaningful way, and I see, as a member of the Board of Trustees and being a trustee, as being a fantastic way to stay connected with Grand Rapids Community College and connected with the community as well. I really want to make a difference here at GRCC. And I want to protect what the board and the college has accomplished over the years. There’s been so much that has gone before me that I was a part of. I was a part of the Michigan Quality Award Plan when I was here. It didn’t just happen overnight just because now the press release came out. It was a long, hard effort on the part of a lot of people here, and I’m so proud and pleased to be able to congratulate you on achieving this award. It’s fantastic. I believe I have the skills and the abilities to do what I am aiming to do. In my agenda, you know, I just don’t even like calling it an agenda because I don’t have an agenda. I don’t have an axe to grind. I don’t have, you know, some place, something that I think needs to be accomplished. So my agenda is about—all about listening, listen, listen, listen.
The question that’s just been asked, let me tell you, is the one that you hear on the street when you announce that you’re putting your hat in the ring for a six-year board position, only it’s something like, why? Why would you want to do that? People, I think, don’t step up to that table often enough and stand back and say, I’m not sure why people would want to do that. For me, I recognize here that I’m not joining a new enterprise, that I am—I want you to know that I’m not a candidate with a platform, that I need to fix something, so I’m not coming to the table for that reason. I’m seeking a seat on a very well-seasoned organization’s board that I can contribute to because of my leadership skills, my experience, and my talents. I did receive an email, again, that technology thing, from I don’t know where, and the gentleman left me a very short message, and he said, “You are very busy. Why should I vote for you? I’m not sure you have time for this.” Now, the first thing I did was, who’s watching me? Who knows I’m this busy? Busy people tend to be engaged in boards because they see solutions. They see commitment as reaching ends. They don’t stand on the sidelines and make criticisms. They roll up their sleeves and get in there, and I would like the opportunity to do that. I would very much like to have a footprint in Grand Rapids Community College’s success, and I have some materials here if any of you, as you’re leaving, are interested in them. Thank you.
I thought Carol was going to say because of the pay. Ours doubles every year, zero times zero. I also get that same question, only in reverse. You have 16 years. Give it up. What’s the deal? Well, my own personal belief system is why I’m continuing and running again for the trustee seat. My passion for students and my passion for education, I want to continue to be part of GRCC’s future, the changing culture in our community, changing economy, which is inevitable, and the future of this college, as well as the future of Grand Rapids. What is my agenda? I keep it very simple, down to three things. Students, they’re our future. Staff, keeping it diverse, giving it support, giving the staff support, treating people fairly, and developing leadership. Finances, to be able to continue our important work regardless of the financial condition of state coffers.
We’ve reached our last question. Is that good news? I have no doubt I have the easier job up here. I appreciate how well you’ve responded. So we’ll keep the same order. Fran has the first response for this last round, and then we’ll keep that same order for the closing statements. So the last question is this. If you are elected, how will GRCC be different in one year from now?
I see GRCC, one year from now, focusing on the future, always looking for possible solutions, being prepared and positioned to respond to the pending state budget crisis and how we will interact with the 27 community colleges throughout the state to bring the state back, to help people to get jobs where they find what they love and learn how to make money doing that, learn the entrepreneurial way. I see that being a part of who we are in the future, is teaching entrepreneurial behaviors, how to, you know, maybe even have a center for entrepreneurs. We’ll be looking at new possibilities, new partnerships, new programs. We’ll be hearing fewer complaints about under-prepared students from our faculty. We’ll be continuing to hire more full-time faculty who are multi-talented so that we can position the college to respond quickly to future needs of our community. We’ll have even more support for diversity than we do today. It’s my passion. I think everyone on this panel probably feels exactly the way I do or closely related to the way I do. It’s a very important thing, and I can—I plan to continue to work toward more appreciation of diversity.
I see this upcoming year for the college, particularly when—not if—the millage passes, that this is going to be a year of strategy. It’s going to have to be a year of strategy because I think the state is going to be asking us to do more, and even though we may have a tad more funding, it’s going to translate to doing more with some of the same funding, that we’re going to be stretched. I oftentimes ask college presidents and teams that I’m working with across the state, is there a carrot or a hammer? Because they’ll say, we’re heading down this direction to do this piece, and by that I mean that the pressure is going to be on community colleges, I think even more so than four-year institutions, to serve as that workforce development partner for the state and to be training workforce and doing things in a big way. And when I also work with community colleges out in many, many rural areas who aren’t—who are not challenged, as we are with full capacity, who, you know, have space, who have classroom seating, and who have not some of the challenges that we do because we’ve done such a good job here, for one thing, and because we’re in a critical mass manufacturing area where we’re seeing it coming from all directions. So I think what we’ll see in this upcoming year is a year spent on digging into strategy and looking at the external factors out there that are beating down upon us right now like never before and trying to be good stewards of our dollars to maximize our potential.
I love this question because it gives me some time to dream, but as I thought of it, I couldn’t help but think of the past 16 years, as I’ve been part of this board, and how different each year looks. But as I think of one year from now, I think GRCC will be funded in a variety of ways, some of which are yet to be decided. We’ll be serving more students who are reaching for their post-secondary education. We’ll be on the cutting edge of the health career explosion happening right next door on the science corridor. We’ll continue to help our staff with their personal growth towards understanding each other. In the future, in the next year, we’ll be connecting the value of education to careers through our career development and counseling and enrollment centers. We’ll be responsible for continued success of the training and retraining a workforce who needs our attention to help keep Grand Rapids strong. We’ll extend out more into the community by continuing to bring the college to the people. I see growth and continued growth of the lifelong learning center, having a stronger presence not only within our college but outside of the college. And more importantly, I continue to have—to have you see me as your board member in one year. Joke. Laugh, please. We’re pretty serious up here. We're pretty serious up here today. Dennis didn't even get it. That makes me real worried, you know, like, one year, I'll still be here?
Right. Oh, I got it. I got it. I got it.
In a year from now, I see a millage that has passed and allow us to even be more fiscally sound. I see us continuing to govern with excellence. I see us continue to seek opportunities to allow us to maintain and expand our program offerings. I see the key thing for us to represent as trustees, the community, to be a good listener and hear concerns. Within our policy governance, I see us continue to set policy that defines our work. We will continue to collaborate with legislators, the Michigan Community College Association and the Association of College, Community College Trustees. We will always continue to put our students first. And as a servant leader and part of a seven-member board, I see myself continuing to serve with competence, experience, and a love of this important work that we do.
All right, we're set for our closing statements and I just want to encourage those of you here to vote. There are two board positions available for the election on Tuesday, May 8. And of course, we do encourage you, I echo Fred's thoughts, to support the millage at this most important time for all the important work we do. We'll keep the same order and let me just give an opportunity to mention each of your names before you begin so people can identify who's who if they haven't figured that out by now and who they'd like to cast their vote for. So up first is Fran Pepper. Your closing statement is two minutes.
Thank you. I bring a fresh perspective with experience. It's a global perspective with a vision for the future. I see the college and board as progressive, facing the challenges in the future, adjusting, growing, changing to meet those challenges. I know the college internally as an employee and externally as a student and citizen. I'm a critical thinker. I've enjoyed the privilege of open and honest communication and relationships with the president, the faculty, the staff, and the board. I stand up for what I believe is right. I work toward building consensus as a team member. And as many of you know, I have also advocated on popular points of view when they are the right ones. Status quo just isn't enough anymore. We need to look to the future. We need to explore together and create the right solutions for tomorrow's challenges. Our mission is to provide the community with learning opportunities that enable people to achieve their goals. Our challenge is to accomplish our mission with diminishing resources. I'm poised, energized, and ready to hit the ground running and I ask you to consider voting for me on May 8.
Thanks, Fran. Next, Carol Lepucki.
Very short and sweet. I entered this race with eyes wide open. I know the time commitment that this takes. I understand the complexity of a system like a community college and all the moving parts to get it to its success level. I understand the importance of community college in the lives of young people who take that step away from high school and out into that next work environment and stage of moving forward as adults in their lives. I understand the footprint that it takes to be engaged here. I understand the importance of the faculty, the students, and the community in moving this organization to its point of reaching its goal of good workers, self-confident employees, young people who know who they are and who feel good about themselves because they've partaken in Grand Rapids Community College as an educational experience. I've seen plenty of them and I would be honored to be your trustee. Thank you.
Teri Hamlin.
What an opportunity to be able to dialogue with you today about who I am and my platform. And truly, thank you for wanting to hear about all of us. And as a charter member of the Board of Trustees, I have helped shape this institution. I have been there with the tough decisions and I've been there with our successes. I have been part of the, I have, let me start over. The personal growth that I have experienced is invaluable. It's really hard for me to think of not being part of this great institution. You know that I care about the college and you know that I care greatly about the Grand Rapids community. Together, we make this a good place to live. On May 8, you will have the opportunity to allow me to continue to make a difference in our educational community. GRCC is the community's strongest asset. Please consider placing your trust and confidence in me again. I would like to invite you to check out my website, www, as they all are, terihamlin.com, to learn more about my platform. In closing, I'd like you to remember that I've been there for all of you. I've been there for the staff, for the students, and for the community members. Now you have a chance to be there for me. But most importantly, please exercise your right to vote on May 8.
And Margot Anderson.
In closing, I would like to thank Frank Fred Hardesfeld for the invitation to come to this forum. And I'd also like to thank the Faculty Association, the role you play, your ownership in this institution, and your continuing efforts in the quality of this college. I appreciate letting me come today to give you my views. In the past six years, we've seen we've lost millions of dollars. It has not been easy for us to keep the quality which we know we have here at Grand Rapids Community College because it's more difficult to operate because of the cuts. I encourage you to support the millage on May 8. And my pledge to you is to work hard, to give you quality of service, to be accessible, and to be a good listener. So on May 8, I ask you to vote for me to continue my service.
I'd like to thank you all for coming and our candidates for being here. Thank you for your candid responses, your time, your willingness to serve us at this most important time. Fred has a couple of comments to close, but how about a nice hand for our four candidates?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like, also to reiterate the thanks for the candidates to take their time today. Part of the reason our elections work, when they do work, is we have candidates who are not only willing to run for unpaid jobs, but also willing to take the time like this to inform people. I think you may have made some people's decisions easier today, but I think in general, I think that you've made people's decisions a little harder to decide among the four of you. But I truly appreciate your willingness to come and participate today. As Dennis said, this probably doesn't bear repeating, but I'll repeat it. The election is May 8. I want to thank Dennis for his time in moderating this. He did a great job. And our timekeeper who just slipped off was kind of part of the package. But I know now that if the college needs to sell one of those clocks, there's a buyer for it. And I think my students might like to buy it too and use it on me sometimes, so. Again, I'd like to acknowledge our other trustees, Jan Magini, Gary Schenk, Alan James, and Rick Verberg, and Jan Magini. So I'd like to thank all of you who have taken your time to come today to come. And I look forward to seeing you. I'd like the faculty to stick around for a little while. And I think that probably about does it. Thank you.[1797.23]